Three times and they haven't been to court yet. So that's where I'm at in this.
All right, got a motion and a second? On the paper, say, ah, on the post? All right.
I am seeing under my section, Jared, is the discussion of election equipment repairs. Give me a moment here and I will pop open a, an email that we received from Ms. Becky Boyd, Circuit Clerk. As you guys know, we have an arrangement with Ms. Boyd to provide election services. Part of that responsibility includes maintenance and repairs of the equipment. Y'all may remember-
Yes.
-that discussion and that agreement. She is sending us a report about the recent inspection of the equipment, election equipment. She wanted to give a report to the board to give you guys some clarity about what they're seeing as far as maintenance and repairs is concerned. And so recently, they found about four different items of election equipment that needed some attention, some level of attention and repair. Here's the bottom line. It is my recommendation, recommendation to leave the equipment alone until next year. We really don't need the additional pieces of equipment that are having issues and we can keep them as spares for this election in November. So the recommendation from her is that we have identified, and she's reported and identified the various pieces of equipment, but there is no need, need to, for those to be sent out for repair at this time. They will hold those and take care of that after November. Does the board have any questions that they would like to present back to Ms. Boyd?
My question is, right now, we're paying her to inspect and maintain and make adjustments to where these will be ready.
Yes, sir.
If we postpone working on one past November, she's no longer required to make repairs and maintain those that she set aside.
Actually, she is not required to make the repairs, Steve. It's still our equipment. She's required to inspect and to give you guys a report on what needs to go out for repair. You guys are still responsible for the repair. So I don't think this changes anything with respect to her agreement. But, but I do appreciate the fact that she is reporting back to you guys where we stand on this. I, one of the reasons why I appreciate it is because undoubtedly, we're going to continue to have these pop up. I would prefer to know, we've got four pieces down before it becomes 12 pieces down. So we're, she's keeping us updated in that respect. So, does the board have any heartburn about whether or not we ought to, we ought to encourage her to let's get these out for repair now, or are you satisfied with the recommendation to leave things where they are?
I'm good with their recommendation. Me personally.
Yeah, me too. Do we need like?
No, sir. I'm just giving you the report. If there's anything we need to report back, I wanted to do that.
Okay.
Okay? Very good. And we will, we'll go with Ms. Boyd's recommendation and we won't take any action at this time. Mr. President, item D is a discussion of a request to install a fence by the property owner whose property lies immediately adjacent to, but not within, the Woodlands Glen phase of the Castle Woods subdivision development. This is District Two property. The requesters' property is accessed via a public road and public road right-of-way that lies within the Castle Woods subdivision development. How this happened is that the original developer submitted plaids for phases of the development. And at some point, it became apparent that the Woodlands Glen phase was not going to be continued. But because it had been planned to be continued, there is no cul-de-sac at the terminus, the current terminus, of the public road segment. It's just a property line. And the individual who has made the request, Mr. Stringer, I believe is here, has purchased the property that lies adjacent to the termination point of the public road segment. So you have a road that is, is it 24? Is it going to be 22? Whatever it is, the road abruptly ends and there is not a way to get turned around at the end of that public road segment. If you make the turn onto the short public road segment, you will be reversing out of there or three-point turning out of there, but you, you won't be going up and around a cul-de-sac because there's not a cul-de-sac there. Had the board been aware that this phase would not be completed, as you guys know, is what we always do, if it had been reflected that it, that the development was going to end, we would have required the developer to install a cul-de-sac at the end of the little, the little segment for first response primarily. We want fire trucks to be able to get up and around. And so the issue has now presented itself. This person is, Mr. Stringer is requesting that he be allowed to install a fence on the border of his property. And, and if the, the decision is made to allow that to occur, the board needs to be aware that there will be a public road segment for which there is no cul-de-sac nor turnaround. So we want the board to address that issue. It's our road, it's our right-of-way. And so we want to be clear with the board on the front end that what the, that what is being requested means that there will not be a way to get first response vehicles turned around if they happen up onto this public road segment.
Well, there's not one now.
No, sir. And, and it's further exacerbated, but of course, there's, there's not anything beyond the point of terminus. It, it, if you drive up in there at this point, I think it's changed now because Mr. Stringer is gonna, he's gone ahead with his construction and I believe there may be a driveway there if I, if I recall correctly. Yeah, so what you, what, what you had up to this point, Jared, was you had the, at least the viewpoint that the subdivision is going to continue on, right? Well, that's changed now. That's changed. And through no fault of anyone here, through no fault of the staff, and admittedly, through no fault of Mr. Stringer-
Right.
-this, this is not property that was within the development. It was just simply sold off. I believe it may have been reflected-
Well, what are we asking of him? We just put a potential?
At most.
Yeah. Kind of, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, we're here to just make sure the board is aware. This is not, this is not the only example in the county where we have a planted subdivision that has a public road segment that abruptly ends with no cul-de-sac.
Yeah, I felt about changing that and that when you got a phase one, phase two, whatever, that that's put in there, I think we talked about that, that you would have to end that one with the cul-de-sac until future development.
We, we now use and have used a temporary cul-de-sac setup-
Right.
-in situations where we have a phase that shows future development beyond. We require the developer to go ahead and install a temporary cul-de-sac.
Right.
And what that does is it gives a, a good visual to anybody that comes along that, that there is an intention for a cul-de-sac to be there if required.
How's garbage truck, school bus turn around?
School bus doesn't turn around.
How many houses on there?
Well, it's, it's a short stretch. It's only probably about 100 yards or 75 yards.
He's the only one on it?
Where it splits off to get to his house and there's probably, I guess there's two houses kind of on that little stretch that's right there to it.
Yes.
But the, the issue, the issue is exactly what you talked about. I'm not really worried about waste management. That's probably how I should be, but the garbage is just going to be the garbage problem. But my issues around the emergency access to that spot and that house, when you have those gates and those type of things that are up there.
Wait, the gate would be, oh, to his house?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, well, how, he's got to get in the gate.
This is in the middle of a subdivision.
I know. You're trying to gate to his house?
Well, to his driveway.
He's putting a gate, yeah.
To his driveway access, don't you? Um, I, I'm just, personally, my opinion is I just need some time to think about it. If you want to come speak and come talk about it, I'd definitely like to hear what you got to say and talk about your, your views of it and your thoughts of it, kind of how we got to where we're, it's not your fault we're here, but it kind of is the situation we're at, so.
The only one with the mask here.
That's all right.
Oh, yeah, basically, I think that it was sectioned office, two estate lots. And so I think at that point, whenever it got approved to go from not a subdivision to estate lots, that's probably the time in which it should have been addressed at that point.
Yeah, so the supervisor at that time wasn't me.
Right.
Right? But so the road was supposed to join with the existing area in the Woodlands Glen. It's supposed to be just a through street where you can make a full loop and come back around. But that didn't happen for whatever reason. So they broke those areas off and they sold those different estate lots. The issue this has is every home you have around you is inside the HOA. Your property is not. So everybody around you has HOA guidelines that wouldn't allow a fence to be there, yet your position is separate. So that's kind of where the issue comes up. So, um, tell, tell me your thoughts on that.
Yeah, just like any, I guess, any other property that borders a homeowner association, I guess, is kind of the way I was looking at it. And, you know, like you say, it's probably 100 feet maybe, and there's a cul-de-sac at the end, you know? So I guess that's how all this kind of goes. So all the emergency vehicles and everything go to the very end past mine. So you just turn, if you make this turn, and you know, I'm thinking about, it'll probably solve the problems of people even making the little turn instead of just going straight if you've got some sort of a visual barrier, you know? Makes sense. And so it'll kind of alleviate any kind of a, you know, people turn right now and they'll turn in the middle of the street.
Have you talked to your neighbors that are there?
Absolutely.
What do they say?
Well, I mean, they're happy to get a, a free fence.
I got you.
You know, yeah, so.
Describe the fence to me.
Just, well, I'll have, I'll match the neighbor's fence. There's a fence that's going to be just like the, probably two houses down. This is very same design, six by six post.
Okay.
And then top plate and, you know, decorative, it'll have top on both sides, it'll have the, I guess, board across the very top.
Wood.
And it'll have tickets on both sides, so.
What kind of gate?
So across the front of your property is going to be a solid wood fence?
Oh, there's not going to be a gate?
Oh, a gate, of course. Yes, sir.
What kind of gate?
Just a, just a, just a metal gate sliding.
So you wouldn't be able to see your property, basically, is what you're saying?
Well, I mean, you'd, you'd be able to see it over, well, I mean, I'm-
Six-foot fence?
It, well, I think the, I would, I'd like to do, you know, eight, minimum of six, maximum of eight.
But you're talking about a wood fence across the front of your property?
And then the gate through the driveway.
The gate to allow into.
You just drive straight. So basically, there's only one house that accesses this besides mine. So that's why it hadn't really been this crazy problem or crazy issue.
What, what I don't want to get into the issue of is, and I'm sure you're not doing it, is storing commercial property there.
Right.
Vehicles and tractors and anything else that could be hid behind that fence-
Sure.
-at a certain point, because we don't need dump trucks and things like that up and down these roads.
Right.
These guys killed my haul ordinance I had as far as the haul bond. I couldn't get that in play anymore because that protected us. So you're lucky there, but I, I don't want to get those things inside a wooded-up fence that blocks the view of that same point.
Yeah, the way it is now, it's just like, there's no barrier. So 10 o'clock the other night, there's people in my driveway turning around. I walk outside and so it's just, you know, it's really not fair to me the way it is to not have some sort of, I mean, it would just make sense for this to deter them as a visual barrier to say, I need to continue down the street and turn around with the cul-de-sac like it's designed. Because there's only like, you know, it's not really an issue with traffic flow because there's no, you know, it's just my driveway that goes straight in and my neighbor's driveway that goes straight in. So, you know, it's, and I guess the, the question is, so what would happen, you know, if you were to install a cul-de-sac? I mean, how does that?
I don't think we got the frontage to start, install a cul-de-sac, do we, Tim? I mean, those things, those things are large because they've got to make school bus turnaround points and things like that. I don't think we got the size or the room to do that.
I think Mr. Stringer has installed some infrastructure at this point that would make it prohibitive for us to try to address it if there's a driveway in place now.
Right, he's got his concrete driveways. There's also, because it was the edge of a phase, all the utilities are right there at the end of that, that dead-end road. So you've got power poles, you've got telephone pads, you've got all kinds of things. And in his neighbor's driveway, he takes off to the left.
Thought he said if you turn, though, there was a cul-de-sac.
Sir?
Thought he said if you went down and turned, there was a cul-de-sac.
You go beyond the segment, you, imagine you're driving north, you would make a left, you'd go west to get to his property. If you continue on a short distance, there is a cul-de-sac in place. So it's just to the north. The, the issue is that there's no, at this point, there's no visual as you make the left-hand turn that lets you know, I'm about to get boxed in here. There's not a way for me to turn around.
But what he, when he puts the fence up, it will be.
Yes, sir.
Well, if you're going to do a fence and a gate, why can't it be the gate site that we've talked about that you have to have, it can't be locked because emergency access?
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Like, you know, the ones we got.
Yeah. I, I guess the thing is, once you start putting a fence around your house, right, and you've got a gate, and let's say, heaven forbid, your house catches on fire, access and ability to get to your home is a little restricted because now all of a sudden, we've got a wood fence around the house. There's no other access to your home other than that front part. Like, I mean, they could go around the back, huh?
Where the gate is?
Well, there's not a gate now.
No, I mean, where you put the gate?
Yeah, but the gate's the width of the driveway and the width of your driveway is what?
Well, it, it, the street's 25, I believe, and then it nears, tapers from that to 20.
Yeah, this is something I got to give some more thought to. I'm just not ready to make an answer on that today. I'm not, my first answer is I'm not anxious about putting the fence, wooden fence around your property on the front side of your property. Access to the street, if that makes sense. I just, just in my mind, in the middle of the subdivision, that stands out to me, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I would, I don't know about in, you know, in the middle. I mean, I'm, I'm, there's another lot to the side that's the same size and then this is like, you know, the backs of people's houses that you're typically going to have a fence for, you know, it's not going to be some, you know, awkward-looking, you know, because I mean, everybody, you know, it's just going to be just a, their backyard would be my front yard. So it's a standard, everybody's got a fence in their backyard kind of scenario, I guess, is how you would view it. And so, yeah, and I guess the main thing, I was just, you know, I know we were trying to figure out about the cul-de-sac and all that, but I'm just, is there any other restrictions that, I mean, or is the, I guess the limiting factor is because of, I, I don't know.
There, there's two limiting factors. One, to me, is the emergency access to it. You're blocking yourself all.
But can't, but a typical gate, can't you, how do you typically access emergency vehicles with gates?
It's going to, it's going to come down.
Yeah.
It's going to come down.
Well, it's got an automatic deal.
Portions of it will.
Well, I know, but I mean.
Well, I'm saying, in the middle-
Don't we have some kind of guidelines that you're going to put a gate up?
That's for, uh-
Yeah, but you're talking about, you're talking about, yeah.
Public access to-
This isn't public access to his house, this is just a gate in his driveway.
Right.
Right, so, but the, the problem with this falls into it is that you're in the middle of the subdivision, right? With HOA restrictions around you, that doesn't apply to you necessarily. But you don't want to do something also that's cosmetically disturbing to the rest of the neighborhood. I mean, for example, a, a gate, a wooden fence around the front of your house, right? You've got a shop there, right? So, so what do you have to the left of your property?
I mean, I'm just, it's just right now, just a house is all I have right now. You know? But at, at, but at the end of the day, I guess, my main thing is, the way it is, there, you know, you've got people just driving, like, you know, the other night, I mean, you know, somebody in your, on your property at 10 o'clock at night, you walk out.
There's no place, there's nowhere for them to go.
That's my biggest scenario is because, you know, there's no visual barrier to say, hey, this isn't the road, that, because, you know, it's wide driveway, continues down. So, you know, it's just, you know, I mean, somebody, it's, it's going, it's going to be an extra problem, you know, at 10 o'clock at night and somebody comes up to your house kind of thing, you know what I mean?
Because there's nowhere for them to go other than straight down your driveway.
And there's no visual reference saying, hey, you, you know, I mean, it's only like my house and my neighbor's house that access this little short piece of segment. So, you know, I just, yes, anybody, we wouldn't want somebody at 10 o'clock at night pulling up and you would want some way to actually do this. And I was kind of trying to, you know, my fence contractor was trying to go ahead and get that done because, you know, he had some downtime with the virus stuff, so.
Yeah, I, I'm just not ready today to make a decision on it. I'm just not. I, I want to think about it a little longer, I want to be sure we make the right decision. Because what I'd hate to do is give you approval to put it and then we have to come back and take it down or something like that. So I want to be sure we make the right decision for you where you don't spend a bunch of excess money that you don't need to spend, so.
But, but it's not, I can't put it up because of what reason, like, you know, as far as the, what ordinance is, is-
Let me interrupt that. When you raised the issue of, by what authority? The issue that's been visited upon the board is that the developer indicated to the board an intention to continue the public street. The public street is immediately adjacent to Mr. Stringer's property. There's a right-of-way there. Despite of the fact that it's a terminated segment, there is still an issue that the county can claim, we have some access there to be able to maintain our public street. So Mr. Stringer can't change the facts, which are this, developer intended to go forward, he didn't, there should have been a cul-de-sac there. Okay? That's our rule, that's our rules on the development ordinance. He's purchased a piece of property that has this extra issue associated with it. It was originally designed to be a part of a subdivision. It was originally going to have a road going through it. There was not going to be estate lots. For whatever reason, it, the issue of the turnaround, the cul-de-sac, did not get addressed. So we have to address it now that we, it has been raised to us. And what is being requested is to install a barrier that precludes us from being able to install a cul-de-sac should the board choose to do that. And what Daniel was saying is, I have not yet made a decision as supervisor for this district that we can then talk about as a board as to whether or not are we going to move forward to require a cul-de-sac? Or are we going to recognize that the cat's sort of gotten out on us? The horse is out of the barn and we may not want to go in that direction. But we, we need to think through all of the issues before we make a final decision. So the authority, to answer Mr. Stringer's question, by what authority? Did we say, don't put your fence up? Well-
The road right-of-way.
Be careful because there is a very primary issue of access and emergency response that the county has under its police power jurisdiction. So be very careful about spending money on something that might in fact come down at his cost.
Yeah, let me ask one other question. How close to the roadway are you want to put this fence?
Well, the, you know, on the ordinance, some 15 feet, you know, is the setback away from, from, you know, so the, you probably, the property line would probably be, I think, would 15 feet, and then I'd go 15 feet from the, the right-of-way.
All right, so let's just say where, where your yard begins, where the road ends, right?
Yes, sir.
You're going to go 15 feet past that towards your house?
Yes, sir.
So who's going to maintain cleaning the front of that fence?
It'd be on my property. I mean, I would, because I'd be, I'd have 15 feet, you know, on the front side of the fence.
You'd have to cut both sides of the fence off.
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir, for sure. Because I'd be on, you know, I would have, you know, the road and then you've got your, some grass section on the road and then 15 feet from the right-of-way, you know?
All right, so Craig, let me ask you this. From our road right-of-way, public acts, not, back up, not public access, access from people saying, let's just say our lovely friends at C-Spire wants to come in and lay infrastructure that's not inside our right-of-way, that's in the yard. How does that affect his fence? Comes down?
Well, C-Spire would have to deal with, with Mr. Stringer at that point.
But, but that could block that out, couldn't it?
It, it's possible if C-Spire makes the decision.
Because a lot of times, they're putting infrastructure that's not inside our right-of-way that's inside your property. You understand that?
And, but I mean, they're still, like, just looking at it, there's still access on each side, you know, that would, would allow for that, plus the 15 feet. So you've already got that right-of-way now on each side, plus another additional 15 feet that I'd be providing per the setback. So you know that the, it looks limiting, but I mean, you know, you've got an extra 30 feet that I'm on the setback, you know, in addition to what you currently have for the right-of-way on each side of the road.
So you'd be up to about 30 feet?
30 feet.
I guess.
I don't, I don't have a clear picture.
Yeah, that's the kind of the-
Um.
What's the ad phrase?
If he, if, if, all of this fence isn't going to be on his property. Is that right?
15 feet inside of my property.
Yeah, so you come down Woodlands Glen.
What type, I mean, gate is going to, who does that obstruct? Just him?
Just me.
Yeah. What about your neighbor that uses that same drive?
His, his, you know, his is, is on up the, uh-
So it would be?
Yeah, this would just be like, you're on my concrete, like, you know, 15 feet inside, like, on my, not the, that's still my, you know?
How, what, how do we, this is county, without a subdivision, no city, how do we regulate that? I mean, why is he here?
So our regulation would just be what, what's going on in our, inside of our right-of-way? We would require a certain size of-
He says he's going to be 15 foot away from our right-of-way.
But his, but his driveway, Steve, connects to the public road segment and is clearly within our right-of-way, so.
Is his title, his land, his legal description, he would be off his legal description at some point?
Well, to get access to the public street, he's allowed to access, under our regulations, he's allowed to access our right-of-way, but he has to be, he has to conform his driveway and the culvert that allows for drainage. He has to conform that to our regulations. But everybody's got to be able to get to the actual pavement of the public road with a vehicle. So it's a similar setup in this circumstance. There's some aspect of our right-of-way that's already impacted by the driveway, right? So the, the primary issue here is this. It, it's that if, if the board reaches a conclusion that we have got to have a cul-de-sac here, then there is currently, if we allow that fence to go up, it will be an additional item of cost and exposure for us to be able to address that wholly.
How about, how about this on the front side? Why couldn't we go out and just price a cul-de-sac right there on what it's going to cost us to build a turnaround? I know it's going to be a high number because the road's not prepped, the width of it all, we'd have to acquire land.
Relocate utilities.
That's going to be, no question about it.
Water, gas.
You're not asking us to pay for the fence, are you?
Huh?
No, he's paying, he's going to pay for the fence.
Private on my, on my property.
Yeah.
And, and I think, you know, a lot, what I was thinking, whenever this got divided up initially to, and approved for two estate lots, when, what was that, 13 or, but, you know, so it went from the-
13 years ago?
Well, 2013, I think, or, it may have been before, but-
Seven, eight years.
The whole, the whole thing was, you know, I'm thinking, so it went from that platted design, possibly turn, making the turnaround, but then it went into two estate lots. So at that point, I guess, where does your, where does your, is it like an eminent domain to take, to, I mean, how do you, where would the cul-de-sac go as far as the size of the cul-de-sac? And I mean, is that, how, I mean, is that, would, would it come on my property, like, as far as be able to, eminent domain, we're putting a cul-de-sac on your property?
I, I'd have to let, I'd have to let Craig answer that as far as if we put-
Well, if you're people willing, if somebody else owns another property, decide, kind of give that up to it.
That's right.
To him. Well, cul-de-sac, whoever owns this property on the left and right's got to be willing to give their property up.
One of the first things that, that I would undertake on behalf of the board is a discussion with the original developer.
For what?
For why there is not a cul-de-sac already there, because the county is not in the cul-de-sac building business for platted subdivisions. We require the developer to place a cul-de-sac at a terminus point. This is what we do. If we had been told that this was going to be a dead end, we would have required emergency response, cul-de-sac. We would have required it. And so my suggestion that if the board, again, I keep going back to that, you guys are the decision makers. Y'all have to arrive at a decision. If the board arrives at the decision that they're, that we're gonna have to have a cul-de-sac at this location, then the discussion needs to go forward from that decision to determine what will the cost be? What will be the requirement to acquire appropriate right of way from adjacent landowners? Who should be responsible for that? Us or the board? I'm sorry, us or the developer? And how is it going to lay out and what other, what other potential entanglements are there? Okay? So I, I think we are struggling to try to arrive at an appropriate decision that could affect others besides just Mr. Stringer. That's the point that we wanted to make here.
Which is why I wanna take a little time to be sure we get the right decision made. I'm not willing to make a decision today. I, I just need to, I need to chicken around some more.
But, but on, but on the fact of the, uh, you know, putting on the original developer and everything like that, I do think that whenever, I think he's probably going to be kinda out of the liability side of it whenever the lots were approved, you know, to be re, you know, instead of, you know, developed as part of the subdivision. So whenever they were, those two lots were at eight acres essentially was changed.
I don't, I don't know what they did when I weren't here, so I don't, I don't have any idea. Let me, give, give me some time to think about this and kinda figure out all the pros and cons that are there before we make this type of decision. So that's, that's what I need myself, but.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. That's, that's.
All right.
Is there any kind of a, for my planning, would I be able to get any kind of a, you know, just so I can plan, any kind of a timeline?
Yeah, my plan is, I'm, I'm gonna talk about it on the fifteenth of July, uh, June, the next, not the next meeting, but the following meeting. So I don't even know if that's the right date.
Next meeting is Monday.
Yeah, so not that one.
We're talking about the next meeting.
The next board meeting, which is what date? Do you know, Mr. Fifteenth?
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth of June's when I'm gonna bring it back up and we'll say yes or no to you then.
Okay.
It's two weeks.
All right.
I can't meet before then, it's my problem.
Sure, certainly. All right.
We'll be sure it's on the agenda.
So we, okay.
Thank you.
We'll go on from that one.
Appreciate y'all's time.
Thanks, thank you.
Item E under my section is a, is, you guys are being asked to provide authorization to enter into lease agreements. Mike, I, I believe, addressed the board with this, uh, this issue at a recent board meeting. You see the items of equipment that are listed there and the monthly price for each of the items. Uh, Michael, we still gonna, we gonna take the, uh, first piece of equipment, the, uh, three oh seven cab, or we gonna take that one off?
No, that's.
That one gonna stay on? Okay, good. So each of the, each of the items that you see there are subject, by the way, these, these are all state contract pieces of equipment, okay? And so you're being asked to approve a lease agreement, uh, on behalf of the road department for each of these pieces of equipment at the monthly price shown and reflected there. Do you have any questions, Mike?
What's that total up to be?
Craig, you talking about part of the law?
Yeah, I mean, what's the overall total?
So the one thing that I will add, just for the board's consideration, is that each of these pieces of equipment comes with the manufacturer's premier warranty, which covers the life of the lease. We also have a commitment from the supplier to provide as close to an immediate replacement for any downtime item. I wish our friends who visited us earlier were here to hear this. The, the manufacturer or, and/or the local dealer will provide a replacement piece of equipment same day if we are down. So the, the, the lease provides or allows us to get out of the maintenance business because we will be under the premier warranty. So it's basically if it needs anything, yeah, even oil changes and stuff like that's covered. Uh, we're, we're gonna get out of the road maintenance, uh, maintenance part of that for items of equipment and allow the dealer to provide that service to us at no additional cost, it's covered under the lease agreement. And if we have a downed piece of equipment, we get a replacement same day.
And if, for whatever reason, and that's kinda hard to feel sometimes, we don't have anything that holds them to that. If they say, hey, we just don't have one. We'll take a week to get it here.
Yeah, yes, sir. Uh, but you know, what holds them to that's the same thing we use with Mid-South. They, they get one chance to do us wrong on that. We don't, it doesn't happen again. We feel pretty good about this particular manufacturer. Feel really good about this particular manufacturer.
Right.
Our experience with this machinery is good. Uh, and I, I'm appreciative of the fact the board is now moving in the direction of making sure that we don't focus exclusively on low. Uh, we focus on excellent service and proper competitive pricing. Uh, we, we need to move in that direction, cause what we're seeing is that the actual cost for some of this equipment, what we have to include in that is how long are we gonna be without it? That's a very real issue for us these days. We need to be careful about who we're asking to help us with these pieces of equipment like this.
All right, so what do you need?
Yes, I need a motion to authorize the entry, uh, on part of the county into the lease agreement for each of those six items of road equipment.
Yeah, so moved.
All right, motion across, second. Calhoun, any discussion? Not all papers, aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
We can put out, uh, in executive session.
Now, now we got Laura Austin.
He didn't want me to say anything today.
He was just saying, he was doing that.
Oh, okay. I thought you just moved right away from her. All right, let's ask.
First item I have this morning is.
I make motion to approve.
Okay, thank you.
Most approved, eight, uh, Mr. Gaines. About a second.
Yeah, a second.
Okay, you got two seconds. Is Calhoun to have that one? All papers, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
The second item is request approval to renew the Department of Public Safety Justice Assistance Grant for FY twenty, the drug court amount of one hundred ninety-six thousand five hundred fifty-four dollars and three cents. And authority to sign those documents.
I make, what motion?
Second.
Motion, Mr. Gaines, second across, any discussion? All papers, aye?
Aye, but just to be clear, this is where we are saying we want to go into this deal where we receive a grant of one hundred ninety-six thousand, uh, and it gives her the authority to sign that document.
Right.
All, all in favor now?
Any more discussion?
Yeah.
Not all papers, aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
The next item I have is authority to pay off lease agreement with Trustmark National Bank. That's on three Mack trucks. That's under one lease that we have. Um, our lease number's one forty-five and the amount of eighty-seven thousand two hundred ninety dollars and ten cents. And then the other one is, uh, one forty-six and that has two, um, dump trucks on it and the amount of that is fifty-eight thousand one ninety-one nineteen.
So moved.
Okay, most approvals, cross. Talking about myself. All papers, aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Hey, are those the ones going to the auction?
Yes, they are.
Let me ask y'all a question. Why can't, if somebody wanted to put in a bid on those, why couldn't they bid here instead of bid at auction, where auctions making money?
It has to be done in a different format. Um, number one, you're not gonna get as much at all, but we have to advertise in three different locations and we have to set a date and receive sealed amounts and.
So the bid law recognizes the auction company has an acceptable format for the county to utilize the services. A private bid situation has to be handled totally differently.
Well, it's safer, but if we wanted to put out those five dump trucks for bids for anybody that's in the county or other counties, could they put in a bid on those? Three other people, I mean, three different?
Are, are they going through the auction company to do that brand? Uh, we would have to declare them surplus and then notice the bid process and provide a public notice that we're gonna receive bids. It's, it's a different, totally different process.
It's gotta be public notice.
Where, where, where it's an auction situation, there is a, there's a public, uh, access. Anybody can go and qualify and bid under the confines of the auction.
Well, reason I was asking, if somebody just called, wasn't aware, they couldn't bid on them or give them a price on them.
But they can, but they have to go to the auction house.
They've paid the premium or ten percent over or whatever.
I've heard, I'm hearing that people ask it all the time. Y'all ready to sell?
Well, another thing is, when you're entering into an agreement with the auction company, Mike sets a certain amount that if we don't get it, a reserve amount, if we don't get it because of like what would be the buyback on these. If you don't have that and you, you could get.
You're a wild strasser.
Well, if they go to the auction, do you have to have nutrient and all that or on the buyback you do?
I, I don't think we do on the auction, do we?
As in?
Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, occasionally we have.
Let no one to go to auction.
The, uh, the auction company actually provides us, occasionally will provide us with a floor price.
Yeah, normally, normally, uh, the auction, we get a guarantee buyback from the auction company. Normally, when I send them the auction, like, we have two companies in Mississippi that do this, uh, D and P Auction and, uh.
Martin.
Martin, Martin. Usually what I do is like, auction companies come look at the vehicles as, as in, they give us a guaranteed buyback on it also. So when I say it's auction, we, we know what they gonna bring, or they sell them off. They gonna give us that, that money. If it's said at a hundred one thousand dollars, at the end of the day, they gonna write me a check for five dump trucks of one hundred one thousand dollars a piece, is what they sell the cul-de-sac.
But now, did we have to pay them something for selling that?
Yeah, it's a commission, yes. So we usually set our order up, cover our business, so we get our buyback number.
Hey, let me ask you, let me ask you a quick question, Mike. This is gonna sound crazy. This is my non-county mind, I guess. When you, when we buy these dump trucks, right, when we bought them, we spend the money out of Harrison's road budget, right? Well, out of his account.
That's great.
But when we sell them and get reimbursed, does the money go back into his account? Or does it go back, it does go back in his account?
Goes back in his.
So all that stuff goes back in there. So he gets the money on, if he sells something two years down the line, three years down the line, it didn't go in general, it goes back into Mike.
Oh, it goes back into the road.
Goes back into the road, okay. That's what I was just double checking.
Yes. If it was bridge, out of the bridge lease, it goes back into the bridge.
I got you. It'd go wherever it came out of, by.
That is correct.
Well, would the beat system be different than the unit system as far as another county being able to sell?
I can sell straight to a county, Brad.
Huh?
I can sell straight to another county, like, actually, you've got.
Any, any unit of, of government, we can do an intergovernmental transfer.
No, he's asking, would the beat system be different where you could, you could sell it to an individual?
Could come in.
They still have to.
Well, uh, Brad, I'm gonna show my ignorance here. I've been helping the board now for thirteen years, twelve years, I've lost track of time. Uh, we, we've never been under the beat system. I have no idea.
Well, the same guy just said that he was gonna.
I'm like I got.
He had another county that would buy, that would sell.
My suspicion is that in the beat system, you've got supervisors who essentially are in charge of their beat. That there could be some distinction in how, um, individual pieces of equipment that are identified to a particular beat, how those could be offloaded, that, that probably is a distinction. But under our system of government, through a road manager and through a road department, we've gotta follow the bid law.
But also those items, even in a beat county, would be inventoried and you're following inventory procedures that statewide, not just unit or beat. They'd have to follow the same inventory procedures.
When I used one for a county in summertime, it still was the same process, cause we did a lot of sealed bids back then, because the equipment was just wild.
But that's beat.
Yeah, in the beat system, so beat, beat had come advertising.
Yes, it's inventory.
It would have to be declared surplus.
Has to still have to go the same process.
That'd be a flag for an auditor to be checking into that.
Hey, I'll just throw this out there. If, if we were to go to the beat system, I would want twenty-five percent of revenue from Daniel's district, being I join him and a good, and, and twenty-five percent from Jake, cause he has no county roads, all right?
And I, and I'd want Jared to negotiate all my road contracts. He gets the best ones. If I can get, if I get Jared to be my broker for my beat district, he, he knows how to get Harrison where he needs to get him, so.
No.
That's what I need.
Did that one go through though?
I don't think y'all voted on that one yet, have you?
I have motion and second, did we go through?
Well, we got a motion, second, and had some discussion.
I'm making motion.
All right, well, we already had a motion. Didn't we just?
Yes, we had motion and second.
All papers, aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
The next item I have is authority to pay an invoice from Liberty Mutual for the final audit adjustment for the policy that ended March one, twenty twenty. And this is for our fire, um, workers comp is what this is for. And their, um, final audit for that was five thousand seven hundred and seventy-two dollars. And because of that adjustment, they are adjusting our current premium that began March one of twenty twenty by four thousand six hundred and eighty-two dollars. And I need authority to issue those checks.
So moved.
Senator.
All right, motion across, second, Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All papers, aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Last item I have is, uh, any questions on the review of the agenda for Monday?
I don't, I'm good.
Okay.
I don't even know what I did with it.
All right, anybody, if no one has any questions? All right, this is a piece to discuss, Mike Harrison.
Oh, sorry for the last minute on this, uh, and I really don't have all my figures together on it, but I know kinda roughly where we're at. Where you, I know you get some direction, me and Ms. Laura talked about it, uh, on the Pierce Road Fire Station. We've got everything in place, building up. Roads done, parking lots, but it's time to go in the inside and do electrical, finish it, finish it up and we're running a little over what our estimate was.
Well, now wait a minute.
No.
We're not, when, when we figured this, we sure were running over, not over our estimate. We put two hundred thousand dollars in there, but that wasn't covering some of the other stuff that's been done. That was the, the building of the inner thing. So we had a hundred and forty-five thousand on the, the building and everything up to this point.
Right.
So we still, as far as the building now, cause the road part, that's not figured in there.
Yeah, I mean, we got asphalt to straighten the road up.
In the initial, is what I'm saying.
We straightened the road up? I thought we wasn't straightening the road up.
We started, oh, May of last year, we said a hundred thousand, we'd do it all. Then we went to two hundred in the bond. And I was, I thought that was for, if we had to do something, the road or the dirt work, seemed like there was a lot of dirt work that you were saying that it gonna cost this much.
Yeah, we had a contractor come in and do the clearing and grubbing on the original site.
So where, how much money we got in it?
One forty-five.
Right now, I'm showing on the books, a hundred and forty-five thousand. Mike said there's some open POs out there, one for asphalt and one for gravel. I can't, I don't see those yet because they're open.
Well, she hadn't seen them because I just closed them while we was in the meeting right here.
Clearing, the clearing and grubbing was forty-six thousand.
But looks like we're, I mean, if you told her, I just got a lump sum now, Steve, I know how it broke out. I'm looking at somewhere from around two fifty-three. That's what the road and everything on it. But I mean, that's all.
Two fifty-three?
Yeah, but that's where we're. I reckon this was brought to my attention, I talked to Ms. Laura, we were trying to get some.
How much more we need to finish it?
I don't know, I'm, I'm working on estimates right now.
Yeah, we, we hadn't got, we needed a price on the electrical. We got met with them as far as like, we didn't want plugs and, you know, different things. And so we don't have a real price on the electrical.
Which we got, I mean, we're, we're okay.
Is the station open?
No.
Is the station open?
I mean, you don't walk in it.
I mean, is the fire truck in there? I mean, is it usable?
No, what's that, fire truck's coming?
It's not open.
No, not yet.
No, fire truck's coming.
Interior.
That's our lady on the fire truck person.
The interior is not.
Nothing the interior is doing in the building. Nothing the interior is doing in the building. It's just a shell.
So we're at two fifty-three right now and nothing's on the inside's been done.
Right, now that's the road, that's the asphalt and everything now.
Right.
I swear, I thought we talked about, do we not talk about straightening the road, not straightening the road?
No, never did, not talk, never did.
You gotta go back and listen to all that. I don't think.
We said.
But anyway, I just, and we ain't gotta make a decision on this today.
What we need, you just need to say, you can take the money from somewhere else.
Well, I reckon what.
I mean, if you had a two hundred thousand dollar bond and you're two fifty-three now.
Yes, sir.
And you probably got another fifty thousand.
It's like your checking account is.
You're overdraft.
You're overdraft right now. I'm in overdraft.
You need to get that money from somewhere else.
Yes.
Where does it come from, Ms. Laura? It looks like we have a hundred thousand dollars over what the bond would have been. I mean, if we're at two fifty-three now and you got about fifty thousand more to finish the inside, you're gonna be about a hundred thousand over the bond. So where does, he's overdraft from the bond?
If you would, if y'all want me to and give me direction, the inside can be renovated, we can do it out of the fire budget.
Actually, the inside.
I'm, I'm speaking for, I, I mean, but it would have to come out of the cash portion.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to put Mike on the spot and Mike's not ready.
It would, it's not in the budget, we would have to amend it out of the cash portion, but there is, would be cash available out of the fire budget if that is y'all's wish.
Yep. Can you say just a breakdown of it, what the cost is?
This was a thought, my thought initially, when we talked about, actually, with the, uh, I guess you're gonna call room or whatever, where you're gonna have a bathroom, whatever.
Yeah.
That was gonna be, uh, we talked about letting our people do that initially, our people as far as our, uh, maintenance guy. It's just a wood structure. We're not going, doing the thing we talked about as far as one time, we talked about doing something that was kinda safe.
Yeah, I remember.
We first started talking about this, Johnny was gonna take it over, we got the shale.
No, 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 it, one, what we were talking about wouldn't have been, but we're not gonna do that.
Can you send, can you email us all a price breakdown?
I can.
Of the whole thing?
Or what has gone in it?
And then where we can get the money from to go ahead and finish it.
Cause you think another fifty thousand?
He's got fifty thou, fifty-three thousand dollars right now that's.
Yeah, and I'm, my, my figures are rough.
And maybe whatever else it costs, and just show us where we can, I mean, I like the idea of taking it from Ed.
Like I said, it's probably not in their budget, it would be out there in the cash in, in fire since it is a fire department.
But, uh.
That would be your alternative.
Basically, I just.
How's that feel it?
This was just discussion.
How's that feel it?
I've had two things with this thing, the, the original plan, the wrong late half, I left this paper a couple of while.
I thought you worked over there.
He, he may have to.
Whole part of this thing, other than the.
I just didn't realize, I mean, I thought we were just putting the building up for a station. I didn't realize we were getting to three hundred thousand on the deal, but I guess we are now.
The building's not, that's what's a little deceiving, you're talking about.
Well, we, I remember us talking about whether we should be at this location or somewhere else because of the location.
And that turn.
The tur, there was a lot of dirt that needed to be moved and y'all were discussing whether or not we needed to move the road. Mike was saying, I think we should, and I think you were saying, I don't think we need to.
No, need to move the road.
Well, we need, I mean, it's.
The land was donated.
It was.
The land donated, and we did, the road, the, the road had a terrible curve that's been a dead man's curve all my life growing up. The man donated this, this, and he said, and then the water company's willing to donate a portion. And in his, kinda like a double duty deal, he said, I'm gonna donate that land. I first talked to him about straightening out the curve, and then he started talking and I said, well, you know, uh, he's talking about the fire station. He said, I'll be willing to donate it and, and this, cause I'm not gonna do anything with it, and he say it may save my daughter's life one day. And so, um, then we got, uh, that's where kinda where it got started, but the, the curve, so it's kind of a, it helps both ends. This real dangerous curve was.
Yeah, it was almost a ninety degree curve.
How much did it cost us to straighten the roads, my question?
I don't have it broke down separate, you know, because we just kinda worked the whole project together.
You gotta move dirt on it? I mean, is it?
We, we moved.
Well, we moved a little bit, but we just kinda moved it from one side.
When, when we bid it, clearing the grubbing, it was to take the hill down, and that was, so that was like forty-six thousand, I think, I looked at it this morning.
Forty-six something.
About forty-six thousand.
I remember, I think you originally said about forty thousand dollars.
Forty-six thousand.
Takes trees off, cut it down to grade.
Okay.
I remember that we did talk about about forty thou, he said it would take about forty thousand dollars to get the dirt right.
Well, initially, we talked about nearly seventy-something, then we, when we bid it, it came in at like forty-six thousand. And that was to clear grub and bring it down to, you know, ready to put.
I mean, we got, we got to finish the building.
I mean, ready to put the pad on it, so that was included, the forty-six included taking the dirt out. Now, we've taken some additional dirt out simply because the, the neighbor, the guy back there said, y'all need to cut that hill down, it's a little more, to give a little more behind the building. Where in your appearance, it looks like it's, you've got more land than you would have, but the guy said, you know, that'd help that much, what we did, it helped the drainage. What we tried to do is keep the drainage from coming into the road, create more water in the road, we were able to then drain it out into the woods, so you don't have water. And we changed the building, which I don't know, it probably was a little cheaper building, but with a lean instead of a hip roof. That way, you didn't have any water shooting out toward the road. And so, uh, it all is a hip lean, but it all runs to the back of the lot and then drains off there.
So we had two hundred thousand budgeted for, is that right?
Two hundred was in the bond, yes.
So we're two fifty now, any another fifty, you think?
I, I really don't know, Daniel, I just, like I said, we just met, we just met with the fire station.
Well, I don't think electric's gonna be that, I mean, just by a lot of plugs.
Plumbing, you got bathrooms.
You gotta have a toilet and a.
You got like, like a kitchen area and air conditioning.
Right.
That kinda stuff.
And we gotta have an air conditioner?
Not in the whole building. And you gotta where you get your bathroom.
You gotta have air conditioner in that room or.
You still.
Yeah, they're not gonna be sleeping.
Well, and you gotta have heat in the bay, don't you?
You gotta have some kinda heat.
You gotta have heat in the bay.
Heat in the bay for the fire truck in the winter times.
You gonna have heat.
You got, you got heating.
You gonna be fifty thousand.
But you got heat in the bay, you gotta have heat in the bay.
Uh.
Can't put a fire truck in the bay without heat.
Just go back and look at the, uh, videos from last, about April.
Some heat to some type, electrical type, keep it down, uh, keep it, keep it warm. And, uh, we take, one time talked about gas, I think that they said it, just go.
Yeah, they, they really hadn't decided and, and I mean, and I, I didn't know it, then, you know, cause we got ready to, when we getting ready to do the road, final thing on the road, I got, thing me and Jerry got talking about the water, well, I contacted Ms. Laura. And I go and put it out there so we can clear this up with Cleary, you know, they have to do the utilities on the building.
Yeah, I'm a little confused, listen to this, I'm a little confused on this, go ahead, explain that.
So basically, I called for them, told them, say, hey, y'all need to call the water company and fire company and get the utilities in, and they said, well, that ain't our job, but it, it is.
Not necessarily, I don't know to get it in, but the state law is, if the county owns the building, we cannot pay utilities on it. That is whoever occupies it.
How we do greenfield?
We, we do the portion, it's double metered, we do the portion that is the community center.
I was wondering.
And it's doubled, it's double metered there. They have their half and we have our portion.
I got it.
But we cannot pay for the utilities in a fire station, it's whoever's housed there.
But I reckon their complaint was, and warned me through Jared, you know, and I, I don't understand this part, that'd be a Ms. Laura question about the taxing thing.
Well, no, they said, what they did say, and Mike, I'm sure they contacted you.
And Mike might know more about that than I do.
They wanted to look at extending their taxing district, and I didn't know they had started, well, I did know they started somewhat several years ago. And I don't know, anyway, didn't follow through, they had the signatures and everything, and so I really don't know what happened. But what they wanted to look at is extending, now, we have that, and I told them it'd be a good time to do it, with the, the station, use it as a, a, a help tool to extend their taxing district where they can draw some revenue.
What they saying is, be hard for them to maintain, pay utilities.
You bump the taxes up on the people around there, that's what you be doing. You extend the taxing district, so now those additional homes pay more taxes in the, yeah, so they don't do it.
But I don't think you have a little problem, with as excited as they are about, what they's gonna lower the insurance, I mean.
If, if those numbers work.
And I, I don't.
Number like.
Were they eight, were they an hour, an eight or something?
Ten.
This was before.
Right.
Hey. Mike.
There are ten, yes.
Cleary, five forms of ten.
Wait, let's talk about what we can do right now, let's.
So basically, what I did, I ordered my, right up to y'all, so we could.
Get with our, find out where, and I was joking about taking Ed's money, if that's not an option, I, I was just picking it. Or if it is an option, I'm not picking, but, uh, we gotta finish the building.
Yes, sir, we gotta finish.
And we gotta find the money, we gotta save the monies coming from here approximately a hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the bond.
Right.
Somewhere between three hundred and three fifty is what this is gonna cost, I guarantee you. But we need to do it. It's gonna be, we're gonna be, I guarantee you, but time we finish it, we're gonna be over three hundred thousand.
If you're figuring all the asphalt and everything, um, yeah, if you're figuring the road and everything.
Yeah, everything, but we still gotta. Does, I mean, you still gotta show where the money come from.
I understand.
And she's gotta allocate some more money to him, cause he's out of bond.
Why can't you do the, on the sirens that we, for the bond, you know, we don't need no more sirens. We need to maintain what we got.
I agree with that.
Why don't we just get Laura to send us the detailed deal, we'll get Bishop here on Monday, what do you think?
We gonna, I, we gonna address that, the siren thing, uh, but we just gotta let her find where we can pay for this and, uh, it went over, it went over, it went over a lot, but, uh, we can.
But Steve, in the beginning, we did not figure in this, sure, it, the overall, but in the beginning, we, a lot of this others come in additional, was not part of what we, was the fire station itself. So, as it is, I'm just saying, so it's, it's gone.
I mean, we wouldn't have had the forty something thousand dollars of dirt work if we wasn't doing the fire station, you know? We, so you gotta say that part was in there, would we have?
No, that, that was, yeah, we bid that for.
For the fire station?
No, that wasn't the fire station slab, where it went.
It was the dirt removed, we had to do the dirt work.
If you hadn't done the fire station.
If we wouldn't do.
It's done somewhere.
Well, I know, I mean, I know, it's somewhere.
Bought land and, and did the dirt work, I was, yeah, you'd had it somewhere.
Uh, maybe, or might, I mean, according on the total of the land.
First off, find land, anybody can say you land down there. I tried to find land to buy, but, and I understand their point, they hate to do something that because of the way it lays, it just ruined their property, you're gonna stick a fire station. It's not like a little corner over here, this was the ideal spot, and this is kinda lucked up on this, and the guy said, hey, you know, do what you need to do. And, uh, so.
But, I mean, whether it's here or there, whatever, we've spent the money.
I was clearing enough that it.
And we got to say that.
Cause when we started this deal, cause I thought Word had in E, at E O C, I thought they had, Ms. Laura, Ms. Laura.
Hey, Laura.
Ms. Laura, in each year, each year, I know we didn't spend it one year, didn't we start out pulling, I thought there was like sixty to eighty thousand dollars out of E O C's budget each year set up for something like this?
Not, not out of E O C.
Did we pull?
It was on the fire, but we had sixty thousand dollars in there for the last couple of years, and one year did not go in, I'm not sure what year that was, but there was sixty thousand dollars in the budget last budget year that was used for, I wanna say, the clearing grubbing, I'm not, I'm not pretty sure.
No, I just, I know what y'all might, it was some set, Laura, you remember, we had set some aside, what, two or so years ago?
Right, and it didn't get used.
That's what I remember, and that added to a hundred and twenty, cause it was twice.
Uh, no, then it got, no, then it got used for, was it something Bob wanted, needed?
You're right, I'd have to go back and check.
He sure did.
Usually what happens during the budget process.
I remember there was sixty thousand, I thought was somewhere.
Yeah, no, but Bob was right, you're right, but Bob took that sixty for something that he, I don't remember what.
Finish your road.
Cause I was like, dang, that's supposed to be for this.
There's a purchase one that came out of fire that was used, the sixty thousand dollar line out of last year, and I think you did the purchase request on it, I did. And if, I won't say it was to, I can't remember what the guy's name is, but the reason I, I remember this, and I got with Mike to get a hold of this guy, was he, he would never turn in his, his invoices, which means we're getting closer to the end of October, and if he didn't turn them in, then I was gonna go into the next budget year, let's say if he only spent half of thirty thousand dollars in the hole. But the issue was something about it was trying to sell the dirt, couldn't sell the dirt, had to loop it across, it just, then weather got it, but it just kinda got all.
What are you talking about? On what dirt? What's he talking about dirt, Mike?
He talking about clearing and grubbing.
Yeah, but that, that's not what we're talking about as far as the sixty thousand.
Yeah, it was.
That's the line I think.
No, it was, no, the one, two years ago, we put some money in there for this said station.
We did.
And we didn't spend it. And something came up, and I think it's something maybe Bob had, we took that money and, and went, did whatever, somewhere moved it over and spent it there. And I said, I said, well, dang, that's for that, we said, we'll just have to relook at it when it get closer, cause I didn't have any land then. So this forty had nothing to do, this came up, it didn't come out of sixty.
What Mike's saying, Jared, I, I, um, cloud just lifted over me a little bit, but when we did this, we hadn't done the bond yet. So when we started this project with Williamson Construction, that P O come out of his fire budget. Cause I remember, I had, I had to call the guy and say, you got to get through with the job, he was trying to sell the dirt off of it.
Right, and couldn't sell it, right.
Couldn't sell it, and we told him we had to be closed out by September first because it was gonna, if it didn't, it's just gonna carry, that P O carries into Mike's budget next year.
Alright, so that forty-six thousand for the dirt, that came out of words?
Actually, it'll come off my figure.
That comes off of your figure?
Yeah, so, I mean, if you take that.
That came out of words, but.
That come out of words, but.
But so that add, but that still adds to your budget? Would that forty-six be, is that forty-six included in your two fifty-three? That is in there, it just came out of words, budget.
It come out of the fire, it come out of the fire, we did that out of fire.
So the forty-six came out of that side right there, I got you, so the forty-six thousand.
My number's a little less.
So that's what I think, can you put all that in detail at first, find all the total?
Let's do, yeah, do that, ask I T. to start back at May. And just anything that says Cleary on the minutes, put it to where we can look at it and see what we said and what we didn't say. And, but we gonna pay, I mean.
That'd be Janice, that'd be J D.
See what we said or didn't say.
I mean, we, we're saying, no, we said this, no, we didn't, we said that, no, the grubbing wasn't part of it, the road wasn't ever mentioned, whatever, and then we'll have a clear.
That's J D., not I T.
Let me put it this way, you couldn't have done the fire station if you weren't gonna straighten the road too, you yourself said you looked at the site.
Yeah, I saw on the map, it's a, it's a.
But you'd never been there, you never actually went there.
I know the road, anytime you put a turn on a road on a fire station, it's a terrible idea, terrible, terrible idea.
And that's what I, that's what I, that's what I explained to you, we took, that was coming out, that was all part of the whole thing. Right now, right now, you can be coming up there and you can see past the fire station.
Yeah, I would, look, you're not gonna, it's easy, I totally agree with you, that a ninety degree turn at a fire station is a terrible idea.
Wouldn't have done that.
Yeah, that's a terrible idea.
It was just a bad location, I mean, even the guy gave it to us, probably fifteen thousand dollars worth in value. It was a bad location.
Yeah.
It's a great location.
It is now.
The road's, the road's straight.
And as far as, maybe bad terrain, but as far as the location.
I'm talking about terrain.
Well, as far as location, it's a great location as far, as far as the rating bureau, or rating, whatever. They agreed, this is where it ought to be.
I just didn't realize that we were going to the three hundred thousand dollar mark, we could've, I guess my thing is, we were gonna spend three hundred grand on it, that mattered.
We should put three hundred in the bond.
That's right.
Yeah, and I, and I'll be honest with you, that's my fault for not tracking it, no matter what I did, but I mean, I, and I'm going off of my figures of what I've had, P Os, and I just wasn't, with the work going on, I wasn't paying attention and I just kept going.
She's gonna put the whole thing together.
All right, we have.
By the time I got my attention, me and Ms. Laura looked at it.
She's gonna, she's gonna find you some money.
J D.'s gonna find it, J D.'s gonna find it starting in May.
We might be spot on, we might be spot on on the money.
Aight.
Uh, I got one thing I would like to add, since y'all did the equipment deal, uh, leave us where Brad's been left on.
Hey, he'll be back.
He'll be back, you know, sometimes these go a little longer.
Yeah.
The cough catches up.
But it's, uh, Benton County, I believe is, is it?
Benton?
And that's north, right, right.
I know exactly where it is, I have a brother-in-law live there.
Okay, well, they bought a backhoe from us previous before in the past, uh, they had a backhoe get run over by eighteen wheeler, got totaled out. They don't wanna buy a new one, they wanna buy one of our backhoes that we're turning back in. I've told them what the sale price is, the buyback agreement price is on the backhoe, and so we'll get ready to do. Yeah, no, we put them, yeah, we can, we just, I'm just putting it up for discussion for y'all to think about.
That's, I, I, I was wondering, how do we, so what we, where we come up with a price to sell one, is the buyback price?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what the manufacturer tells us, it's worth at the end of our term.
Right, but is it, is it worth more than that?
Could be.
That's what I'm saying, I just.
I mean, that's why you typically go to auction, Jared.
Well, that's what I'm saying, should we add five percent to it and sell it? So that would cover you, that would, in that buy what your commission is, five, depends on where it.
Yes, sir, but I, I usually just try to work with my surrounding counties or counties around us.
Well, I understand for down Simpson, but, but I mean, Benton, man, that's, that's up in Casey Jones world.
But see, they're still a beat system, so they, they've got a budget, that's the problem is, this is the backhoe I'm talking about with Chris.
Benton's in the beat system?
Yes.
I didn't love that.
So he's just got X amount of money in his budget, you know, or backup, if he had more, he'd go buy a brand new, you know.
So what do you want us to do?
Well, we're gonna add it for Monday, Ms. Laura said.
Aight.
She wants us to give them the backup.
We're, we're gonna sell it to them, but I've got, bringing up to y'all's discussion, so you'd be aware of what we was talking about.
Yeah, I just, I, I just, my only thing is, like I say, they're way up there, if it was Simpson County, I think we all get our.
Is Ken Sullivan close?
Huh? Yeah, I got one more thing I wanna talk to you about. They're a neighbor county that.
Right, and they send us invoices.
I was fixing to bring it up.
You gotta, you gotta. You want me to wait on Ken and come back?
Uh, let's see how long it'll take him to get here.
Hey, while we're waiting, while we're waiting on Ken, what do we, uh, what's our status, our official answer or update on opening of county offices?
Monday, right?
So with the order that came out yesterday?
I'm gonna let Ed talk on that.
No, I'll let, Blake can answer that, tell me one of them words, my word, word, tell me one of them.
He said throw it.
Throw it, word.
From Obi Young?
Today was, um, actually, this board's opportunity to demonstrate, uh, an aspect of reopening. We, we did not, uh, turn the TVs on outside, we didn't ask people to wait outside, uh, we spaced appropriately, we had folks here in, we, we asked them, I think we tried to clarify with them, do you actually have business before the board? With the idea being that there would be some way to control folks, the number of folks in here, and if we needed to limit access, that it would be folks that actually had business before the board. So you have implemented today already, uh, an aspect of reopening county government by having folks attend your meeting directly, okay? So, uh, June one, the governor's executive order transfers from a shelter in place order to a reinstate all aspects of economic activity, but do it safely.
Okay.
Okay, so the, it's a flipping of the, the view that you take about what we're doing. It's, instead of we don't want activity ongoing, it's we want activity ongoing with guidelines.
So I guess the question is, I've had several calls on, that's Caroline's office, but the cars, I mean, will they start being allowed to come inside on June first?
Yeah, I, I don't know the answer to that question.
I got her coming, she wanted to talk to y'all.
Okay.
We should be out here by five.
I'm not going to comment further if she's coming.
Yeah.
Yeah, great question, you know, that's the most visible, obvious sign that something's radically different about our operations as the tax collector, so.
Hey, Jessica, what's y'all storing y'all's office, you got people coming in? Or what are y'all going to do Monday?
I've been asked several times when we're opening backhoe, but I've just been saying June first, so I don't know. Actually, I'm supposed to meet with Larry after this meeting, because he wants to know what y'all have to say, so.
So this is one of those, um, it takes two to tango situations, the board is viewed to be in charge of things until we don't need to be in charge of things. Right, so you've got elected officials who operate their offices with some level of autonomy. And so we, we would, we would hope to be able to do this in a coordinated fashion. My suggestion to you guys would be that we're ready, I think we're ready and prepared. There are some things about our setup that haven't been addressed yet, okay? So we've, we've wanted to do some retrofitting, the installation, some things, and what we've run into is the inability of some of these subs to actually get glass.
Everybody's doing it.
Yep, everybody's doing it, so you've got a plate glass situation or a barricade situation that's.
I've ordered, I've submitted the order, but it's on backorder for about four weeks because the demand is so high right now.
For the, the glasses, for what, uh, let's see.
For the plexiglass for the, um, Flowood Tax Collector's office, for her office to take down the, the, um.
They can operate with those over there now.
They can operate with those, yes, those fine, but to replace those when something better comes in, for the two front desk in John's office, and for, um.
Yes, Larry's.
No, Jeff, Larry's doing his separate, then he did her separate, and then for, um, in the booking for, for Sarah.
There she is.
Oh, and the secretary out here in the youth court.
So again, just to, to clarify for you guys, you've got, you've got the admin supervisor segment of county government that you guys control, and, and you can determine how it is that you want the opening, the reopening to look. But there are elected officials who operate their departments, uh, and we're all kind of wadded up together operating under the same facility, in the same facility, that, uh, that also have, uh, a degree of control over what, how their offices function, this is what we're trying to do. I, I, and I suggest to you that, that we could consider some, the potential that we could do a unified reopening, uh, but what it'll look like for us is probably markedly different than what it's going to look like for the departments that have day-to-day constituent contact in a, in a location where it's going to be a cattle call. It's going to be, and so what, what looks like an appropriate reopening for the board supervisors may not necessarily look like the same kind of reopening for the tax collector or the chanter clerk's office, tax assessor, or the circuit clerk's office. And, uh, I think we've just got to give some room for our elected officials to be able to make some decisions that may not necessarily look exactly how we do it, uh, at, at, as board supervisor. I'd like to be in the same place, hon- honestly, I'd like for us to say, we're open, let's go, uh, but, but we've got some, some difficulties there. Keep in mind that the guidance is still that they do not want gatherings indoors that exceed fifty. So outdoor gathering, a hundred, indoor fifty, this is the guidance, it's not a law. Uh, nobody's going to jail because of that, uh, but it's, but it is, um, uh, the recognized guidance. I want to add this right now with you guys, uh, one of the, one of the primary shifts in our effort with respect to consultative services that we have with our friends at Bernini, and our interaction with legisla, with the legislature. One of our primary issues, one of our primary concerns, and one thing that I'm thankful that we have help with, because we're seeing some traction on it, is some, uh, is some help with respect to potential, uh, immunity issues that we need. Uh, litigation is already being discussed. Uh, claims of individuals that governments, businesses, et cetera, have, have.
Can you explain when you said immunity process, you're not talking about people's immunity, you're talking about the government being, uh.
That's correct. It's the kind of immunity that only lawyers can love, it's immunity from lit, from specious litigation, from fraudulent litigation, uh, where the claim is being made that for whatever reason, the county and municipality, a business, has failed to protect someone from acquiring this virus. Right, so that's out there that's being discussed, it's not in place, and, and until it is in place, uh, we, we need to continue to be mindful that that is the kind of claim that can appear. Uh, and we need to be prepared for it, so, uh, we are taking steps, we, I'm saying, there is a concerted effort on the part of many constituencies to have that addressed, and to have it addressed in such a way that it, it essentially, it eliminates the risk of exposure. Our decision-making with respect to reopening would look dramatically different if we had a statute in place right now that provided what I'm talking about. It'd look dramatically different, it would free us up to make a, a much more aggressive posture or reopening possibility, we're, we're not there yet. And so I think it behooves us to continue to be a little bit careful, uh, and certainly to give our department heads, our elected officials, some autonomy to make decisions that make sense for their departments and for their personnel, we can't lose sight of that. Part of what they do, what are doing that's protected in nature is to provide protection for our people in addition to the constituents, okay, so.
Do we need, do, do we need a motion or anything?
No, sir, um, your, your staff made the, uh, command decision that we were reopening as a, today, as a, basically as a test, as a demonstration that it can be done, for our purposes, it can be done.
I would like to just say that the board of supervisors want to reopen in accordance with the governor's guidelines.
Yeah.
Hmm, well, that's what we are.
Put it on our website, put it on our website, yeah.
I, I think just as a matter of, um.
And that the other elected officials handle it their, their way.
It, it seems to me that it would be good form for us to ask Ms. Law to communicate that first to our own people, to our elected officials, and say, this is, uh, this is not dogma, uh, this is a, this is in the nature of a request or recommendation. Consider the governor's guidelines and determine whether or not your.
Each, each office is different, and they, they have a little different.
We will push that messaging out, and then we'll get it out on the website after we make contact with our own folks.
Um, let's, let's do Caroline, I was waiting on Ken.
What you?
We just want to know what your plans are.
Okay, so.
Everybody's asking us.
Here is, yeah, um, here is good, here's not an issue, I've already got, worked with sheriff's department as far as how we can limit the number of people, um, coming in, and thank goodness that limit has raised a little bit. The problem is the whole social distancing, the actual distance, we're going to have to play with that, so I'm literally putting things on the floor to try to figure out, we can do that, that's fine. Flowood, nothing was done, they, I mean, we have no plexiglass, we have, they don't even really have a good area from a, how you can do a line. Um, still, I've already talked with sheriff's department, we've got a deputy that can go out there and help manage that, also help, a lot of this is going to push people back to their cars in that area. What we're trying not to do is bombard that parking lot there. Um, I still want to open Flowood next week, however, we have no, no protective anything. Um, it's going to be kind of a jumbled mess for a few days.
I think Wery can try to get you some supplies, can't you, like masks, gloves, sanitizer?
I've carried her, I've carried her a bunch of stuff already, anything?
I mean, I just mean the, yeah, yeah, we've got, yeah, that, that part is not, but I'm just saying, we don't have, and, you know, we're going to need wipes and things to wipe down, I mean, it's just, we're limited more on that location, but that's the kicker, if I could get that one open, it would alleviate a ton over here. Um, Richland is pretty, I mean, they're small, we can, we can do one or two people in there at a time, that's not a problem. This location's not a problem either, um, Flowood is my biggest concern right now, mainly from a parking lot perspective because of other businesses in that area.
I mean, it may take a few days to get it, Flowood up and running, but if we're heading in that direction, I think one thing this virus did is let everybody in Rankin County know how important it is, this government office, this building.
Absolutely, absolutely, and it, and y'all, I mean, hear me say, my, I, I, I just, I can't brag on them enough between the sheriff's department and my staff. It, it's amazing.
Back to you.
Back to the sheriff, it always comes back, doesn't it?
Look, because they're taking the, a lot of the heat off of us when people get mad, so that's helpful, but, um, but really and truly, it has gone super smoothly, I, I think, I have no complaints, um.
Oh, Lord, I have had, I, I don't know, a thousand, you know, and all they do is complain because they had to sit in line.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, they're not complaining that you, y'all ugly to them or anything.
Yeah, right, 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 yeah, um, even people.
They might complain about the sheriff, they've had.
Well, I've had, oh, you don't know how many, no, we're, we're being, we're.
I know, I know, I'm asking them to take.
What do you need for us to do at Flowood to get it, I mean, the plexiglass is something that's going to be just temporary.
I mean, originally, I thought we were go, and I emailed Law this earlier, she hadn't had time, I thought we were going one direction, and then we switched, and so that put us weeks behind, and so, um, so that was just a delay, so, um, as far as Flowood, I mean, I still would like to open them next week, and we're just going to have to kind of be cautious and limit people and, and kind of get them, um.
Somebody at the door, letting them in then.
That's what we're going to do, we've got a deputy that's going to be out there, so, um, that, that is all in place, I mean, we're good to go, it just may.
But you won't have, it's still no glass.
Once we met with, um, Karen, she got me a quote back the next day, it was only two days later when I discussed with Jessica in different offices, were they going to go with it? It was ordered, and it, it.
It's just back order.
We got an option, we got an option as to whether we were doing it.
No, that, we get the stuff in, Jessica, because Larry is a big bait fisher, he, his counter was totally different, so we went with her things, but it doesn't matter.
It's just plexiglass.
Yes, it's a, it's a, it's a plexiglass, it's guaranteed not to yellow or anything.
Yeah, it, it doesn't, uh, I bought some yesterday.
But they said the, the glass itself, glass glass, would be too heavy for a lot of the counters, and it would take longer because the counters would have to be red.
Why can't we just use that, that type of plexiglass stuff?
They're backordered everywhere, I called.
I just ordered, got a whole sheet yesterday.
I called, I called three glass companies that do the installation, and they said they were four to six weeks out on it.
Is Ben doing it, or?
No, no, sir, we have a company.
That's where, like, we started.
I don't know how much they have, but I called this place and went and picked up a sheet yesterday.
So Ben started doing what?
They put temporary up, he, he can't, he was only going to come back and remove what was in the brunt, put it to the back, but he's just got raw wood and sand.
That stuff is being manned all over the place.
All right.
So Ben does not do it, you got a contractor to do it?
That is correct.
But I'm good, as long as y'all are good with opening next week.
I got, go ahead, thank you, Caroline.
Thank you, thank you.
Brian, you get through this, I'll ask something.
Yeah.
Wait, I think Sheriff's got something.
Well, I, I just, you know, I'm just open, whatever, I'm just asking, uh, when do you think, well, I know they have the, uh, like shoplifters and things, when are we going to be able to, kind of like you were saying, somebody was saying, open, open parts of jail, when we going to be backing it, or are you back, is it full, or?
I'm on, right now, all I'm taking is violent crimes, including misdemeanors domestic violence, and I think, you know, we get one COVID case, and there's one bankrupt.
When do you think, I mean, what, what is the future of that?
Well, my plan is right now is to, uh, start, uh, the first of the month, it's start, I'm going to sit down and look at the list of families and decide which families we're going to start taking, and probably DUIs, but, uh, you know, it's just, uh, and we still have the little off-site facility, we may, we don't know if Sheriff somebody has, it like still blocks somebody away from here, but we're going to slowly, slowly, uh, start taking more and more, but, uh, I said my piece, it's just one case, and they're here, it's going to ruin us.
But I mean, yeah, I, I just don't, you know, I, somebody would have said something about, you know, a while ago about the, uh, law enforcement getting discouraged because.
That was me.
Yeah.
I was more in the justice system of not getting.
But I mean, overall, same thing there, though.
Well, now there's some police, often I irritated with, with you because I wouldn't take some, and, you know, I wouldn't let my own deputies bring some people to jail.
What, who was, who was upset, police department, some of them?
Yes, girl, I mean, you have, look, they're paying twenty-five dollars a day, where cops is forty-five dollars a day to have somebody anyways, so, I mean, I shut everybody down, so.
I mean.
I'm conscious guys, I'm going to do buys, and they can't bring anybody to jail, I'm going to say five dollars.
What is, what's our total budget at our jail?
Five, just over five hundred.
Yeah.
Does that include the misdemeanor center?
Uh, oh, that's.
I'm sorry, six, six twenty now, with Mr. Wood, but through the DA's office and Justice Court, everybody's got a count of three six.
The three six, the what?
Three six.
Twenty sixteen, they can jail. And if M D O C would, like, if they were accepting them, they'd be, right now, the last camp we had forty-five that were waiting to go to the M D O C.
So DUIs and things, how did they handle them? I mean, how did, how, not only you, I mean, how did they handle them if they got somebody?
Get somebody to take them home, get family to go pick them up, or something like that, again, that scares me to death, because if we don't take them, they turn around and get another vehicle and hurt somebody, there's one DUI case that did take, and it's a person that y'all know, that, uh, I just, there was no other option, but I had to lock him up because he was a threat, so.
Some, somebody, we're out here, the same shoplifter twice, and he just kind of laughed, like, where are you going to take me?
Mr. Jerry, this is not my burden, but the murder manager, he has a county, uh, in the federal, uh, prison up there, they had, uh, three cases, they finally got them cleaned out, and they did a transfer, and he went within about five days from zero to seven human cases.
I mean, I don't know what we're going to do, when you look at it from that perspective.
Well, I said, when we have a, when somebody comes in, we do the questionnaire, the COVID questionnaire, and then, uh, they're, uh, they're going to be quarantined, you probably get some complaints on that because they're quarantined for fourteen days, we're going to keep them in a certain area, fourteen days, after those fourteen days, if they're not satisfied, we'll move them where they're supposed to be. Well, we're already doing that, we're going to continue.
I, I guess, uh, question would be, I mean, I don't know how you, like you said, uncharted waters, how would ever be, when to be back to normal?
After we get some vaccine?
Apparently, when we get a vaccine, if we get a vaccine.
Yeah. I'll legally get it.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not going to be the person to try it.
Yeah, if, if that's all you have for the sheriff.
Yeah, that's it.
I want to get Mike a word up just right quick, uh, so we can, he's been waiting.
Never, real quick. He said quick, Mike word, that just didn't go together.
Notice I haven't moved away from the mic yet.
He'll get up here quick, he's just getting it moved quick.
I, I haven't, I haven't tendered the mic. Um, the, the, the issue that we want to educate you guys about, make you aware of, is that it, it goes back to the situation with masks that are being provided, um, and put that in quotes, uh, that are being provided, uh, by the Mississippi State Department of Health, and by Mississippi Emergency Management, Management Agency, uh, under the auspices of the governor, and some directions that have come down from that office. What, we have been advised that whether we want them or not, we're going to, to receive, as the governor described, washable community masks, okay, that, that was what we were told to expect. We received a shipment of masks that are not washable. In fact, on the box, it says they're good for about four hours, and then you dispose of them. So they are not repeatable, they can't be washed and reworn, okay? So that, that's not what was described as what we should expect to receive.
Right.
As late as yesterday, we were advised that perhaps the description as washable community masks was, uh, was inaccurate, and what we received, apparently. And what we received, apparently, was supposed to be the hand them out masks. These are the disposable masks. So, we are, on behalf of Mike, I'm saying to you guys, uh, we're getting conflicting guidance about what we have and what we're to do with it. The board was advised that this was not a decision, uh, you weren't asked to render any official decision about it, you were simply advised that your staff believes your best use of the masks that we received was to make sure that we keep our stockpile, uh, adequate, and that we anticipate the potential for a resurgence, and that we keep in mind that we've got an election coming up in November, and we may need those masks to, to take care of our election workers and folks who are coming to vote who may not have a mask.
So you're gonna make it mandatory?
So, you don't know exactly what you're gonna be dealing with out in the future, the better part of, of the planning process was to backfill our stockpile with these masks. So, we, we're just looking to you guys to give us some direction, uh, as to whether or not your opinion now is different, that we may not actually be getting any washable masks to distribute. Is your opinion different now? We, we have gotten some calls from the public, not a lot, the number of calls continues to decline over time, but we have gotten some calls about where are the masks that are gonna be handed out? So, we just need a little bit of direction from you guys, do, do we proceed with the stockpile, or do we need to take a different direction?
I, I think we should wait until we get the masks that they say is the ones that go out to the public. And as we get them, I think something like a United Way or a nonprofit that's in our county, we, as we get them, we give them to them and ask them to distribute them to wherever they, however they distribute them, but to the public, and see, and get some guidance from state auditor that we're doing it right.
Thank you for bringing that up, I have a report on that.
Because we're taking public resources and giving it to private people.
That's correct.
But if we had somebody that is like a United Way, that may be.
So we got some direct guidance from the state auditor on that issue, we were concerned about the potential that we would be accused of illegal donation of county resources. Thankfully, uh, with a little bit of telegraphing on our part, uh, we were able to secure the opinion that we are in fact not taking possession of anything. It is in fact not going to be converted to county property at all, we are simply serving as a pass-through of state assets. And with that interpretation, which I agree with, by the way, wholly support, with that interpretation, that frees us up then to have minimal contact with the masks. Uh, we're simply receiving, distributing, okay? And, and our requirement would simply be to notate what was done with the masks, not who got them, how many they got, or any of that other. It's, what did we do with them when they hit our pod and ultimately ended up in a position to be distributed, okay? So there's a lot of freedom and flexibility on our part, and a lot of decisions that can be made, we haven't arrived at that, but what I'm hearing at this point is that we would be better served to wait on the masks that we were told would be the community masks, right?
Right.
Okay, so if that's the position of the board, that's what we'll do.
Alright.
You need Ken, sir?
Yeah, I can, and, can and Mike.
You don't sound like Mike, keep trying to get up.
While Mike's coming, uh, State Department of Health also requested permission, uh, through the county, through our EMA, to, uh, to look at a site for potential public testing. We wanted to revisit that with you guys, I alerted y'all to that. Uh, in the past, what we have said was, if they're gonna locate a potential testing site, which is all done under the auspices of the State Health Department. You, you, they are simply asking us for some limited resources, primarily law enforcement for the purposes of crowd control in and around the testing site. Secondarily to that, they have wanted to locate these potential temporary testing sites on school district property, and we've been very clear with them, if you're gonna do that, you need to deal with the property owner, and that is not Rankin County, so they need to work through the school district. Mike, is there any particular?
Yes, the, uh, the, the school district is, if, if we're, if we're good with it, then they're gonna let them on their property, if, if we're not, then they're not. Um, they want access to bathrooms, they're not gonna get that in Rankin County, they're gonna have to supply their own Portons if they want it. Uh, for the second time in a row now, they're saying they wanna go to Pisgah, the last time they wanted to go to Pisgah, then they changed it to, uh, Brandon High School because of visibility.
Would you wanna go to Pisgah?
They can't answer that question.
The very north corner.
That's right.
They can't answer that question.
It's not remote enough, is it?
And they just, they just closed down the, uh, I don't know if you sent it on the news or not, they just closed down the fairgrounds, testing site, and they're gonna relocate it, but they don't know where they're gonna relocate it at.
Why'd they close it down?
No idea, but there's a, uh, I do know that there's a tremendous amount of sites in Rankin County, most of our, uh, health facilities can and do test. They, I have been assured that they will continue to use the original test that goes all the way up to the back of your head. You must have the clearance from U N M C through the app, you will be turned away if you show up without having the authorization code, and they, they need, uh, obviously, they said a couple law enforcement from twelve until four o'clock, they'll do it on one day.
But that, that need, that needs to be, if it's in, it's in the city, that needs to be, that city's place to perform.
Now they want to go to Pisgah.
Why don't you stand that is?
I can tell you why, because they don't want anybody to show up. And they don't have any, there's no internet out there, so they're not gonna be able to look at it.
Look at their seats, Byron.
I've got a couple options on my end of this thing, just whatever your, your wish is off, um, we can, if, if you guys are good with it, we'll, we will help coordinate that as a Rankin County effort. If, uh, if you'd rather steer, steer clear of the issue, I'll be having to contract, or contact the State Department of Health and say, hey, guys, look, here's the deal, if you guys wanna do something, you, you know, make it out, look, we're out.
Yeah, toward, toward the center of the county, yeah.
Whatever, whatever y'all wanna do.
What you got, Brian?
I just wanna close this in, you know, we're talking about the deputy having a tag office, and having ex-deputies at work, yeah, there's not an infinite number of deputies we're starting, especially when school starts back, we're gonna be in a bind. Because luckily, I'm using all the school deputies, the court services deputies, because there's no court.
Right.
So the courts should start back up two fifteen, so my number's gonna try and go on my extra health.
Alright.
Whatever you guys.
Y'all got any thoughts on that?
My thought is center of the county.
In the city?
In the city. I think Brandon High School would be a great location, there's a lot of parking, a lot of.
Does Brandon, uh, Sheriff, does Brandon do school resource officers in Brandon High School, or are you having to do? Because I know we're having, we're having to do Northwest, is my point, so. But you're covering all the Northwest schools, aren't you?
In reference to what you're talking about with law enforcement, is this not being a, a school function?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
My first opinion, I think, would be coming upon, if it wasn't the city of Brandon, it would be coming upon the city of Brandon to provide the.
It would.
And again, based on the, uh, I guess the emphasis the mayors in these cities, if it's placed upon being notified of things that go on, let them make the decision. Call the mayors of each of these cities and say.
That's another good point.
Do we have your permission?
We don't have a mayor in Pisgah.
That's right. I thought you were, you, hey, you were the mayor of Pisgah, you are the mayor of Pisgah. No, I mean, I, I'm a Steve, I put it in the center of the county somewhere.
I will call my coordinator with, uh, State Department of Health as soon as we leave here.
And have them contact a city mayor.
You've got three highways, state highways that come together there, you got.
Airport. Trains, trains, everything. What's wrong with the city of, uh, well, the Jackson International Airport?
That's the city of Jackson.
I know.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Alright, what else? What else?
Talk to us about the reopening of the multi-purpose building, or whatever y'all call it.
Well, I'll touch on it briefly, and then questions, y'all know any skin, basically, what we're looking at is opening next weekend, not this weekend, but the next.
We can't have a soft opening on June the first, and I'm talking about not for shows, and I think we should, when we open for a soft opening, Rankin County people for the first week to test and run it as a test that week, and we monitor it. Uh, I know there's guidelines and all the stuff that can, you have to go by, but, uh.
I buy with that, y'all, and that's the only thing that me and Ken have thought about through this nineteen deal that we're going through, but I think we all tried to. Weekly stuff to Rankin County people.
Well, yeah, no more than a hundred in the building, and, I mean, when I say a soft opening, I don't think you have more than fifteen vehicles there from Rankin County. You know, if we say that we're gonna be open as a test this week, soft test, not a show, nothing's booked, and then, whenever we have the shows, I think we should put it on the producer, whoever rents the building, it's your responsibility to follow all of these guidelines and give it to them. To where we're not out there doing it, if we find that they're not doing that, we go to their manager and say, hey, y'all, you know, gotta clean it up, do whatever, and.
Yeah, I put together a complete line of detail based on buildings, type of shows, the whole nine yards, which they're actually, whoever puts on the show will have to say that it costs, but saying they will follow that, or they can't follow their future show.
Right.
Uh, as far as the soft opening goes, and I haven't, that can't stop the series, uh, this is the only thing I'm trying to consider as far as that goes. If you, if you were to say we could open this Saturday, we won't be ready, I can't meet those guidelines by this Saturday, but I can have them done by next Saturday. So if you say, we can have a show at the six, I can be ready, uh, you said, May thirty-first, no, I got eight guys working right now, he's gonna take another couple, but we will be ready by the six. The other, the other thing is, though, every person I have working there is an inmate at Rankin County Jail. We're gonna have the public coming in to ride, and these guys have to clean up after them, and then go back to the Rankin County Jail, so I just don't know the sheriff's feelings about having inmates from the jail mixed with the public population, and then even after a show, you know. The vi- cleaning up, the virus can live in the building on surfaces for maybe three days, based off what, what we know. Does he want them cleaning up within those three-day period, or does he want it to die out before he sends inmates in and have to come back to the jail? So I'm gonna refer that part to the sheriff.
So the only good thing, what we're doing, I'm, um, I actually came to the law or got her on, uh, healthcare, we decided right now to put all trustees in the new building. And that way, they're separated from the main building, so I'm out, I'm letting some go out and work right now, so I'm good with them going out and working, so I have to follow the gloves, man, I'm gonna have to make sure they're well protected.
Correct, but, but do you mind the public getting there at the same time, the inmates are there, or them coming behind? I mean, do they, do they, the inmates need to work during the day, and maybe the riding start later in the afternoon?
I don't, inmates run any of those at all, yeah.
So that, that's something we can consider, we wanna start letting the public come in, Rankin County people, say, at four P M to eight P M instead of.
You're talking about, just during the week?
During the week, I said.
At least after bond's loaded.
Yeah, yeah, I'd say middle afternoon, something like that, and, uh, and, and limited, you know, right now, Rankin County, even if you only did it three days next week, you know, to show that we are trying to get going and, and we're going in the right direction, we're gonna be safe, and, uh, we're gonna comply with, you know, Dr. Dobbs and every, well, but I think that we need to make a move as far as, uh, I've heard everything in the world, I mean, it's just crazy, that, I mean, I've heard that we're being paid a thousand dollars a week to stay shut down, and that's why we're doing it. Yeah, I mean, that, um, and, and they don't, these people, they don't.
I agree we need to do something, but then again, is, how do we control it to just be Rankin County?
Well, tags, I mean, just tags.
But who's gonna enforce that, we getting more deputies for that?
Well, no.
That's gonna put me twelve hours a day, seven days a week.
Maybe you're not gonna have them, but you're, you're not gonna have them, but maybe from three o'clock until nine o'clock, not three o'clock in the afternoon, and at nine o'clock, you gotta go.
Alright, who's gonna, are you gonna regulate the time, maybe?
Yeah, you gotta gate, they do.
No, I know, I mean, how long, somebody could be there.
No, I'm just talking, well.
I mean, if so many show, say, too many show up.
You're not gonna get a hundred from Rankin County, there's not a hundred people that have horses in Rankin County that show. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, yes, sir. Yes, sir, I would, whatever we can do to raise this cloud. We, like, people don't understand, they can make a decision for themselves and their immediate family, we have to make a decision for a hundred and sixty thousand people. That, when they, when we have a show, it's not just people from Rankin County, it's people from out of state.
Right now, I, I can tell you, since I'm there every day, and I know how it was before the shutdown, seventy percent of the people that ride here in the week are either from out of county, because their counties do not allow public riding, or they're people that are in the business that are doing it.
For show, for training, whatever, right.
As far as actual Rankin County people who come and ride, it's about thirty percent that do shows up.
That's, that's why I'd like to do a soft opening for the week, and then if you book something next weekend, then you handle it. The next week after that, you've learned a lot of what, you know, how we did it, you may stay soft for another week during the week, or you may say, we're ready, but.
I think during the week, they will have to stay soft, like you said, for a few weeks, you know, the biggest thing that I won't be able to do, and, you know, we probably run into more argument up there, because nobody feels like anybody's gonna get punished up there.
What are you talking about?
Well, I mean, if we walk up to somebody and they're from Lee County, and we say, hey, sir, you can't be here, that usually is conversation, I'll just be honest with you. Mr. Lee County wants to usually make conversation, and it's ready, you know.
Right now, we, we're in a learning curve, and, and, you know, this is. We need to put it on that page, and, you know, that we're having a soft opening for Rankin County people only, and, uh, if you're gonna have a show next weekend, we'll try to do that, and, uh, you, I mean, I think it shows a lot of cooperation on our behalf for our constituent people from Rankin County, uh, because that's the, you know, big thing I hear is we pay taxes, and we provide taxes, you know, this, and we can't use it. With somebody from Scott County, or Simpson County, or wherever, they don't have that argument.
They drive a light truck.
I don't know, but, uh, I think y'all, I think y'all can handle, uh.
Like pulled up earlier today, we all can get to go in and do something, the lady pulled up, she was from out of county, I mean, I ain't talking about ten minutes, my county, I'm telling you where she's from, so we're not, we just drove down. Just like a result.
Well, and, you know, one thing that goes through my mind, when these people, like, even the baseball and sports, they're monitoring those, and you can only have so many, and in our deal, in our building, we have people coming from several states, coming and going in different directions, and we, I mean, this, you can't track somebody that may have been, might be positive from some other county, or even some other state coming over here, and these other sports are primarily neighborhoods, and local people that, uh, we got a hotspot in Holmes County right now, that's, uh, pretty close to us, and I don't want their disease over here. I mean, I hate to be that blunt, but, you know, right now, I think we'll just try to do it soft, and.
Uh, we're, we're off, are letting Rankin County people use the facility? Uh, we're, we're off, are letting Rankin County people use the facility?
And I, I'd like, we put something together, and I'm not putting words in Craig's mouth, he's looked at it, I think he's good with it.
Ken, that break off with the guidance and, and with the, the purported regulation that we wanna see, especially, we want to see the show organizers be responsible to police. Uh, I, I can't, I wholeheartedly agree, we've got to put the burden on the show organizer to follow the guidance.
And we've had Mike, we're seeing him come over and help us get everything set up on the inside for those people. And I mean, Ken's done, like I said, I can't brag on Ken enough, he's done a super job, and he's, we're coordinating with the show people now, so, I mean, we really turned loose, and that was my question.
So when you, when are we thinking about doing it? We're gonna do a soft open?
I mean, we do a soft opening in June one, you know, I would like a little break, we got a show that weekend, I would like to, me and Ken talk about it. I think we need a little separation right there, just give us a little bit of room for things to die and.
Be sanitized.
Be sanitized and done, and be ready for the show people to come in, you know.
See, the public don't understand.